Good evening. It is 6:30 on Thursday, October 8th. We're in the Berlin Room at the Olentangie Administrative Offices and this is a regular Board of Education meeting. Mrs. Hatfield, would you please call the roll?
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mrs. Patrick?
Here.
Mrs. Wagner Fiesel?
Here.
And Dr. Weiss?
Here.
Thank you.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will now entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Wagner Fiesel?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
I'd like to invite Randy Wright, our Chief Administrative -- he's the Chief of Administrative Services, and our Chief Communications Officer, Krista Davis, to the podium. We are going to have a presentation on the redistricting process. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. We're excited to be here tonight to briefly kick off for you our timeline and how we are going to --
To run our redistricting process while many other things are going on in the district, we as always very thankful that our voters have entrusted to us the opening of an additional building and to make sure that that is all taken care of smoothly, we're going to have to get kids into that building for next August. And that process is kicking off officially with this presentation tonight. So Krista and I will go through briefly what we are planning on doing. Each time we do this, we do share again with you our redistricting guidelines and the resolution that you originally approved in September of 2015. This document is in your support docs for your review. And the first part here on these slides, these are some things that we just take as our philosophical understandings about the complexity of redistricting in a district like ours. We understand how important it is that our community feel part of the buildings to which they are assigned. We also understand that our size doesn't make -- does make it difficult to achieve that community at times. We have steadfastly held the belief that all of our children deserve the same educational opportunities regardless of to which building they are assigned. And we have gone through in the last several of these processes to ensure we understand that it's not just about geographical lines or boundaries on a map that make up who we are. We think about the entire district every time we go into these processes. We try not to operate in a vacuum. We want to make sure that decisions that we make are understood not only for the students impacted, but the families that are left behind, if you will, or are not considered. And then finally, we'll make sure that the sense of community throughout as we work to be as transparent as possible with the process. So when we go into and we think about how do we want to redistribute the addresses and the planning units and the students that are located throughout the district when we are opening a new building or when we are doing any necessary redistricting, we want to optimally utilize all of our buildings. Once we've done that, we want to do this as few times as possible except to adjust for when we have disparate student populations. If our enrollments get way out of whack, we want to be able to take care of that. If we have to distribute programs evenly, or in this case, our primary objective is the opening of an additional building. So those considerations are considered as we look at the entire K-12 organization and enrollment patterns. That does not mean for any reason that we are going to go any broader in our redistricting than we need to, but with each of these opportunities, we do take a global view across many areas to ensure that we are utilizing our buildings as efficiently and effectively as possible. With those considerations, we want to think about safety, convenience, and transportation and make sure that we are not creating undue hardships on our operations team or on our families whenever possible. And we want to make sure that whenever possible, we try to create effective feeder patterns for the sense of community that we talked about before. So these are the items in the resolution. Again, those will -- those are available in your resolution, or excuse me, in your support documents. And we will be -- Krista's going to talk about our website, and that'll be available on the website when we get everything finalized there. Just for a review, we do have a map here that shows our elementary enrollment boundaries for all 15 of our elementaries. And that little beautifully drawn black star in the middle of the screen, which has also been highlighted with the arrow, that is approximately where Elementary 16 is going to sit. And once that is done, we are going to fill it with the appropriate amount of students. And so you can see visually some of the logical areas from which we may draw, but sometimes it's not just as easy as picturing it. And as we go into the process, we're going to make sure that we utilize effective, experienced individuals who understand this process and how we like to work through this to make sure that we do this as effectively as possible. So my last thing, I'm going to turn over to Krista, a little bit about the timeline. We are at the, obviously, the second bullet here. We are announcing our timeline tonight. We'll also be hearing about our enrollment projections, which will be a huge part of what influences the decisions we recommend to Mr. Rafe for his decision. After this meeting, we will start the selection process for our committee. I'll let Krista talk a little bit more about that. And then we anticipate meeting with our committee later this month and into March before a decision is made. We do have a slide a little bit later. We'll talk about the building leadership being hired. Then we get to the new year, and some of the exciting things then happen. School name. We'll start thinking about the scenarios and present those for some feedback. A school mascot gets added to the timeline now, once we have an idea of who will be likely heading that way. Our staffing process starts in February, and then our goal, as we do each time, we want to have decisions made in March so that we can implement those redistricting plans for the following year. Krista?
All right. Thank you. Hello. As Randy mentioned, we will be selecting committee members here in the coming week, week and a half. We are looking for individuals with previous experience on our redistricting and attendance boundary committees and representing various building levels. But we are going to also be looking at a much smaller group than we've normally had due to the pandemic and the need to meet virtually. We will be looking for people that will commit to following the redistricting guidelines you approve in your resolution and to be committed to attend a number of meetings. As Randy mentioned, we'll be meeting the last week of October to kick things off. And then generally speaking, we'll have about two meetings a month for those individuals as we move forward, with culmination in March, per the timeline. We want them to be sure to have a deep understanding of the enrollment projections, the feeder patterns, and then those composition of planning units that we normally talk about when we do redistricting. So they will be an integral part of this, and they will hopefully be all people that we have worked with previously on redistricting. So they should have a really strong understanding coming into this about the process and how it all works. So we will announce those committee members once we select them, and then we will be committed to provide regular updates as the committee meets. So in that beginning timeframe, we will refresh everybody's memory on what the redistricting resolution is. We'll talk about the planning units, the enrollment, just really create that basic base level of understanding. And then we will continue to update the community at large about this because the committee is not going to be as big as it typically has been. And then we will look for opportunities for virtual feedback because I would assume that we will not be able to have our typical community forums that we have held in person in the past, but that does not eliminate the opportunity for us to gather feedback from a wide variety of individuals. As I'll get to share later with the thought exchange later tonight, many people can participate in a meaningful way virtually. And then our target date is March 26th for Mr. Rafe to share the new attendance boundaries and for Elementary 16, and then potentially any other impacted areas that might result from the redistricting effort. Any questions for us?
What do you mean by impacted areas by redistricting?
We mean that anybody impacted through not only Elementary 16's redistricting, but if we find other areas similar to our pocket redistricting in the past, those would be impacted areas that we would encompass in this process.
Is this a view of questions?
And you said that you're going to use people who had already been on the committee. So do you want them to say, yes, I want to be on this? Are you contacting them?
We are contacting them for two reasons. One, the length of time that we have to pull this together, and two, we've run a number of processes where we've had a wide range of individuals apply or submit their name as interested parties. So I think we have a really good pool of individuals to pick from.
Given the change in the population of Olentangie over time, would you want to have some new people on the committee?
That's a great suggestion, and I think, yes, we can definitely consider that, I think, as Randy and I, we have not sent any information out yet.
Significant value and experience, but also it's, you know, fresh set of eyes could be helpful, too.
Sure. That makes sense, as well as succession planning for future redistricting efforts because there probably will be more of them.
There will be. That's the one guarantee of Olentangie.
One of the biggest factors was the simple fact that we can't coordinate large-scale meetings of a committee of 60-some like we've had for the prior two models. So we know we have to drastically reduce it. We have our select people that have been part of those prior two from a variety of areas. But obviously, you know, we know with the longevity planning, opportunities are coming again for redistricting as well. And with the way the levy vote got pushed back and the timeline, we're under a much more condensed timeline than we've been in the past as well.
And you also have some other large issues to deal with right now, too. So I appreciate that. Anybody else have any questions? No? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, I guess that's a good segue into my president's report because Dave and I did have a facilities committee meeting last night, and it was very well attended. We had, I think, only two people that joined us virtually. I guess I'm not certain of that, but the crew was there, and it was very information-filled. We met with our construction manager at risk, our architect.
Civil.
Pardon?
Civil engineer.
Civil engineer. So we really were fortunate, and I think a lot of kudos go out to all those that had to work. They literally went from zero to 120 when that levy finally passed and got things started. So, you know, great to report and hear that they are on their timeline right now and under their budget. So that's outstanding. We also got, Dave and I got a little preview from Sharon Juriewicz. She's the facilities committee chair, and she's going to be updating us this evening on enrollment. I don't think she's throwing any huge curveballs our way. And then next week, we have the finance and audit committee meeting. I think that's October 12th. Correct. It's Monday. So the other thing that's faced us as board members is a very large amount of emails in the last couple of days. So I took my time. I read them. I tried to answer as many as I possibly could and still complete my daily work. But what is evident is there are a lot of people that are feeling very frustrated and overwhelmed by the current hybrid model. And I get that. You know, I absolutely understand because this is not how any teachers wanted to teach or anybody set out to do this. So I hear that. I also think that it's very important that the decisions that administration and the board will make going forward aren't based on emails. Like, they will be based on several data points, and we need to keep that in mind. So we look forward to getting an update from Mr. Rafe and company on how our thought exchange survey went. I personally feel like that's a much better gauge because people can share their thoughts and opinions safely. I don't feel like Facebook is a very safe avenue to do that today, so I look forward to hearing that. There were a couple of things that I also wanted to share with the community. There is a big shortage of substitute teachers, bus drivers, and custodians. And in all the emails that I read in the last couple of days, not a single one of them took any consideration into our staff. So we can't do this without our staff. They're pretty hard to replace right now. So I think that that is also something that we, as a community, need to keep in mind as we move forward. I appreciate the suggestions. I think that every suggestion that has been brought forward, our administration vets looks at, considers, and weighs. And, you know, in us going back five days a week, which is still our goal, going from six feet down to three feet in social distancing is a game changer on the way that we have to report, who gets quarantined. So again, I, you know, I feel pretty confident with Mr. Rafe and his administration's decisions on how to best do that so we can continue to move forward and not have to take a really quick step back. There were a few things that I don't know if they're really worth mentioning, but -- and I can only bring my own personal perspective, and I'm not speaking on behalf of the entire board, but lots of conversation about tax refunds, part-time educations. I have a child at a state university, and our tuition has not been altered. She has five classes and is in-person, has the in-person opportunity of one class for a total of an hour and a half per week. My tuition hasn't changed. It is not her optimal learning, and so I can't, you know, I think we have to keep that perspective, too. We can't hold Olentangie to higher standards than a university is advising by. So -- and also, they don't have to teach second graders, and we do. So I think I'm pretty proud of where we're at. I know that there'll be continued discussion this evening, and I just wanted to let the community know that I have read your emails. We have all read your emails. We hear you, and thank you. That's all I have for this evening. Does anybody else?
I just want to say that before you put anything out on Facebook, that you verify that is absolutely true. Because today, a lot of time and effort was put into tracking down if we had an email problem that really wasn't our email problem, it was the user's email problem. Our technology staff got involved in investigating it. Our communication staff got involved. We were all involved because we were getting test emails, and we all work, whether it's at our home or at our office. And we all had to take time away because somebody said we were blocking emails, which we do not.
I don't actually know how to do that.
I don't either.
I'm not going to spend the time trying to figure it out, either, so.
And so it just makes me very angry that so much time was spent on user error.
I would concur with that. We have a lot of other issues to care of.
I think you did finally, somebody finally stepped up to the angry Facebook crowd to validate, because I know there isn't anybody who spends more time than you responding to people. So that the idea that you, of all people, would have blocked the email
Right.
is really insulting. That is the bothersome part of it. You know, I did think initially it might have been Mr. King and his flip phone, but...
No, but I did get copied on. We, you know, there's, we got several emails that we were all copied on, and the majority of them, your email was incorrect.
Yes.
Isn't it Wagner underscore Fiesel?
It's Julie underscore Wagner hyphen Fiesel. It was set up years ago that way, and that's, so that's how it's been. I tell everybody I love my husband, but not my mother-in-law. That's why I'm Julie Wagner Fiesel. And so, you know, it's correct on our website.
I think it's been posted incorrectly. I think Lakeisha had some problems with hers as well, so we get our emails.
Yes, we do. And we don't block you.
We do, yeah. All right. Moving on, Mr. Rafe, would you like to present us with your superintendent's report?
I would love to do that, so. I'm like, I'm going to start being like, you know, Governor Dwyane, who sports new the ties of all the local colleges or the state colleges. I'm going to start supporting, you know.
Does that say jackets?
It's the jackets, the Johnny Cake Corners yellow jackets. So.
Very nice.
Anybody want to, you know, I can get you...
Twenty-five different masks plus this one, huh?
Yes. And I will demonstrate the ability to wear them all incorrectly because I am the world's worst mask wearer. So anyway, welcome to all of you and everybody here in person and the 73 people watching. Thank you for attending our virtual board, our board meeting virtually. You know, I just, I really do want to echo that. You know, as you, I don't read anything on social media. I've deleted my Twitter because it is so negative, and it's sad because I thought about, you know, when I first did it, all I wanted to do was have a fun way to interact with the kids. And then trolls and other people just make it so horrible. The hurtful part of seeing those things is there are people who don't know you. And I always say in those situations, those people don't know me well enough to hate me. You really want to get the real picture, talk to my wife. They don't know, and it just, a lot of time and a lot of effort, just like you said, Mrs. Fiesel, went into trying to solve that problem because we want to, we're highly respectful of our community. And I just wish we could presume positive intentions because we are really all trying our best. That being said, there are a lot of great things going on all throughout the district, so I always like to start with that. We had 28 students, based off of the PSAT test, become national merit semifinalists. So you see all 28 of them there on the screen, five from Olentangie, five from Orange, five from Berlin, and 13 from Liberty. So congratulations to those students and families. We're working on how we will recognize them in the virtual world, but we will give them their board recognition. We did host the Delaware General Health District, so you see Carrie Sanders and Sheila Hittelson and with Nicole Carruthers from Liberty Middle School. They came out to check out all our protocols, learn and see what our safety protocols were. They learned, I think it was at Berlin High School, somebody reminded them, if your nose is cold, that means you're not wearing your mask covering it. So they liked that and decided to share that phrase with other school districts. So we did receive high marks from the Health District for all the safety protocols we have in place. And I do want to publicly thank Sheila and her team because they have been highly, highly responsive and helpful in all that we do. And when we do have a positive case, getting communications out, they've been very, very responsive. So they are doing a great job at the Delaware General Health District. Just want to highlight a, you know, we have these types of activities going on all throughout the district. The Kindness Club at Arrowhead distributed school supply bags on September 25th. So that's just, you know, again, a great way for the community to support each other. So I like in there that each of the bags received, each student received a nice positive note from the Arrowhead Kindness Club. Berlin High School's Interact Club held a walk to end Alzheimer's and raised over $6,000. So of course, socially distanced, properly masked, and proper social distancing. We did have a little dust-up on our, we had posted some, because it is National Principals' Month. As you see here, we're celebrating our principals and system principals all month. We had a little dust-up because we posted some pictures of the principals from last year. They weren't wearing masks, so Instagram and Facebook kind of blew up on us that one, and we had to put a disclaimer on those that these pictures are old, they're not these years' pictures. So as you notice there, all the principals are properly social distancing and wearing their PPEs. So this is a very, very sad note, but we did lose two staff members here in the last week. Dave Manier, who was actually the Transportation Driver of the Year. His wife is the office aide at Olentangie Meadows Elementary, long, longtime Olentangie family members, passed away from, about of lung disease. And then Ashley Wise from Indian Springs Elementary School teacher. And she's actually was in a literacy support role this year. Previously taught fourth grade, fourth and fifth grade, passed away from cancer. So great people. It's very, very, very sad to lose any of our staff members, but I wanted to take a moment to publicly recognize them and thank them for their years of service to our students. So as Krista had mentioned in her, or Mr. Wright and Mrs. Davis mentioned in their presentation, we are getting started with the process of hiring for Elementary 16, the principal. So you see there a timeline. We hope to have before you on December 10th an action to employ. So they'll begin their assignment here on January 4th when we start back after the winter break. Yes, sir?
Could a sitting principal get out of their contract for a mid-year hire?
They would be moving into the same, they're hired as a principal, so they'd be continuing in that same contract.
But if they come from another district?
Oh, then that'll, that'd be up to the other district. But they could, yeah. And we will, obviously, you know, we feel like we have a great talent pool in our elementary, middle, I don't see a high school assistant looking at an elementary building, but I could see a lot of middle school assistants doing that. I think we've got a great pool of internal candidates, and that's where we'll start. We will post the job externally and see what, who has interest, but that would be up to the district. And again, if I had, if we had a situation where, let's just say, one of our principals saw an opportunity in another district, maybe closer to home or something like that, I would never hold somebody back from an opportunity if that's what they wanted. Because as we, like, you know, I tell them, it would be all the time, you're replaceable. So with that, turn it over to Krista to talk about the thought exchange summary and the data that we collected. I do agree with you, Mrs. Patrick. I think it's a great tool as opposed to just a survey that you really don't have to put any thought into. And in this tool, you have to actually read what other people, other people's thoughts and give them a ranking, and that allows the top thoughts to bubble up. And it really does give you, it gives us a lot of really good information that we're going to use to inform our decisions moving forward.
Thank you. All right. So as you know, we opened the thought exchange for one week in late September to gather the pulse of our parents, our students, and our staff. And kind of as Mark just outlined, it allows our stakeholders to know, to let us know what they are thinking rather than us providing them suggested answers from which to select. So we really like this format to not provide guardrails for individuals and really put some thought into not only the thoughts that they're sharing with us, but what they're rating and what's important to them and what they feel strongly about. I know in the last board meeting, I shared some demographic statistics. Our survey ended with a total of 5,647 participants sharing 5,545 unique thoughts and over 170,000 ratings of those thoughts. So sometimes people would message us and say, you know, people are encouraging people to go back in the thought exchange. And we would say, that's great. That's what we want them to do. It's not a matter of stuffing the ballot box. It's not a matter of stuffing the ballot box to, you know, skew the results. We want people to go back when we open a Thought Exchange, go back and share multiple thoughts, as many thoughts as they have about this particular question or topic and rate as many thoughts. Going back multiple times allows you to see thoughts that were entered after you entered your thoughts and, and ratings. So it's a great, a great tool to allow people to participate as much as they want and it's not a popularity contest or a vote. Of those respondents, we talked about this last time as well, of the respondents, thirteen percent were certified staff members, three percent classified, the wide, or the vast majority rather were our parents. And then we were able to encourage over 400 of our students to participate. Our individuals also shared what perspective they were answering these, or adding thoughts in to the Thought Exchange. So a person could have children at multiple grade levels or teach in different areas, so they could go in from different perspectives and, and add thoughts. So you can see that the majority were, thoughts were given from the elementary building level with high school a close second. The Thought Exchange dashboard has lots of tools for us to use to dig down into the information that we're receiving. A lot of it is interactive, however, for this, for this presentation, it is static, but I am happy to share with you in a more detailed way some of the thoughts that were shared and some of the information that we have through the dashboard. One of the opportunities we have is to create a Word Cloud. This just generates a quick visual representation of some of the biggest topics emerging in our exchange. One of the interesting things I think here is that the related, words that are related to each other are in the same color. So I know that screen's probably a little bit easier to read over here, but I think you'll see some themes that emerge just even with that quick look. In the Thought Exchange, we want to highlight the key thoughts that emerged out of the, the exchange and out of all of the thoughts, these three were the key three thoughts that bubbled up, which I think are fantastic. They demonstrate how much individuals are appreciated for the job that they are doing. And when I think as a district leadership team and the Board of Education, we oftentimes are hearing the more negative or critical side of things, it's great to see the overwhelming positivity that was portrayed in this Thought Exchange and recognition of the hard work that individuals are doing. We are able to do theming within our dashboard and so we've pulled the top themes that emerged during this, during this Thought Exchange. So it helps us pull out the participant priorities, underlying values and beliefs, and allows us to look at these results from a values-based perspective to hopefully find new ways to bring us together. So we are going to take a peek at these top three themes that were, were identified. There we go. Gratitude to our teachers and district, these were the themes or the comments that you just saw. I just want to take a moment to say, we are so proud of our staff and all they've done and continue to do to make this the best possible experience given the circumstances. I don't think we can say that enough and I love that we get to highlight that here. Thought Exchange starts each thought with a mid-range ranking automatically of three and then as participants rate thoughts, they either move up or down on the scale. So what I think is of note here is clearly participants felt strongly about the work that our employees are accomplishing by the high level of rating. The next theme we're going to spend a moment talking about is teacher stress. Interestingly, the second theme highlights the stress experienced in our hybrid model for our teachers. Teachers are really feeling the pressure of managing both at-home and in-person students on a daily basis. Creating virtual assignments, answering questions and keeping both groups at the same pace while simultaneously teaching all five days clearly presents some challenges. They're definitely going above and beyond, but they are feeling that stress of being able to provide all that they're used to providing for their students in a regular school year. And then our third theme that we'll take a look at tonight is centered around general support regarding safety protocols and PPE. Our kids are doing a great job with masks and social distancing and all the protocols that we ask them to do from hand washing and following directional arrows in hallways and so forth. And I think that quite frankly surprised us a little bit, especially with some of the younger students, but our thoughts here were really supportive of what our students and staff are doing in relation to following those safety guidelines. And that brings a sense of comfort to everyone who is in person in the buildings. Thought Exchange also allows us to view sets of differences in the exchange. The difference highlights both areas of division and of agreement in an exchange. This allows us to bring the aspects of the differences of these dynamics out in the open to address them. So for the purpose of this presentation, we're going to view the top three sets. While there are multiple different sets within this exchange, we're looking at the three that the AI identified in the system as different groups of individuals who are rating the same thoughts high and low. You'll notice that there are keywords that give us insight into the topics each difference set discusses. So for example, this one, difference one is talking about schedules and learning models. As we get to difference three in a couple of slides, you'll see there's discussions on wearing masks and PPE and there might be some overlap in these top three. We like to highlight a few sets of differences because each set tells us a slightly different story. So each time we look at these different sets, we should be thinking to ourselves, what story is this telling us and what's important to each group? Does it uncover special interests? What's the common ground that we can focus on, focus our attention on to have some quick and easy wins? So in this story, you might consider that it's clear that 727 folks are saying, we are ready to go back to school in person full-time. And on the other side, 709 individuals shared a low ranking to the thought, please keep the hybrid model throughout the year. It's great for social interaction and guidance while keeping students safe. So clearly you can see the difference that we've been experiencing in comments and emails that you've all been receiving, but the overlap in this is clearly universally, no matter what side of the coin you fall on, you, the people are recognizing that teachers are working very hard. This set of differences looks at the safety protocols and mask wearing. Obviously, the story you can garner from this could be the importance of the PPE and the masks, individuals' feelings about wearing masks and about students wearing masks and comfort level with following those components. And then the differences on all of these sets of slides show that the biggest polarization that we have is around the in-person return to school. So this really shows our rating patterns. If you look at the rankings, so side A is giving four point eight, almost a five rating, star rating to those thoughts. And on, whoopsie, on the other side, we have the low rating of just about a one. So with that, we, we think that it's important for us to continue to dig into the sentiments shared with us and consider it as one facet of the information that we are considering here in Week Six of school. So before I turn it back over to Mr. Rafe to continue to talk about the indicators that we are looking at as we are in our school year, I would be happy to answer any questions you have about the Thought Exchange.
I think it's important to point out that when you showed the different things that people were ranking, that the in-person every day and the remain hybrid was, looked about fifty-fifty.
Correct. Yes, it is very equally split and polarizing at the same time.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you for sharing that with us.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I just want to bring us back and start by taking a step back to look at what we talked about on July 28th. These are the attendance models we shared. And, you know, we say there that we have the yellow and the orange and the red and the purple, the county risk levels, and of course, all of that data and information is up for public discussion and debate on what you believe to be accurate or inaccurate and all those kind of number, or those kind of thoughts on the risk levels guidelines by county. We said on July 28th that those were one piece of data because just because we're in one color or the other, it would indicate what our, what our model was and that there was not a direct alignment even though this graphic kind of shows that. I think if we were going in the other direction of purple, it would be a different feeling about it in terms of what we should be doing. And if we were in that purple range, it probably wouldn't be up to us anyways. The state would probably have, would be looking at shutting districts down at that point. So obviously, we shared these models with you, with our staff and with the community. Basically said there were two options. There was an in-person option that, or could include daily attendance, hybrid attendance or possibly virtual attendance, and then the distance learning alternative with a semester-long I'd like to just reemphasize, we're not doing anything different than we said we were going to do on July 28th. We're aligned with this plan. We think it's really important, so you know, people that are saying, we don't know what's going on, this is what's going on. We're aligned to this plan. And I appreciate the desire for the community and staff to know what's going to happen in the future, but it just, it's still very difficult. I don't know that anybody has that crystal-clear crystal ball. So I think it's important, when we do or if we do change, we will give ample time to plan and prep for that. But I also think it's important to note for us that every district that has stated some specific date or a plan, the people that rushed out there first with a lot of, a lot of plans and dates and timelines and things like that have had to modify those dates and plans and I think that causes a lot of undue stress in their communities. And so, and this has just not been something we've been willing, or something we've been unwilling to do. And while we've been busy opening the school year on the hybrid model and launching the CDL program, which essentially equates to the third-largest school district in the county, we've also been working on monitoring certain key performance indicators, little shout-out to Mr. Bartz and his favorite term, as we consider our next steps. And we continue to say, I saw it in every one of your email responses, everyone in our organization wants the kids back in school full-time safely. So we're going to go over and share that criteria, you know, Krista's already shared the Thought Exchanges and that's an important piece of information, but we want to share what we've been monitoring and where we're going with all this. So as we consider which of these attendance models we're going to be on, our driving question, how we, what we're using to make all our decisions is how do we maximize student learning while minimizing risk for students and staff? You know, one of the emails I got just, just recently said, I am 100% certain that this virus poses no risk to students or staff, 100% certain. I don't have that clarity and I don't think any of us, any of you do, I don't think any of our leadership team does. So there's risk. We're going to, we're going to continue to work to minimize those risks as best we can. But, you know, it's still our goal always to maximize student learning and we also know that this hybrid model is not as good as all-day, every-day in-person. And that's, you know, those are competing priorities. So there have been a number of items we've been reviewing and monitoring for the past six weeks and you see that list there because these all play a factor in how we're going to make our decision to continue on this model or go to a different attendance model in the future. I apologize that this is a little small and hard to read, so you see there, we're tracking the student attendance rates, teacher attendance rates. Since the start of school year, we've been monitoring all this local data and that's really what should matter most to our staff and our parents. Our data, as expected, has slowly shown us what we knew would be true. As we return to our school buildings, our jobs and return together, we will have positive cases of the virus. Yes, we will have positive cases. We monitor these data points. We're also aware that our mitigation efforts are working because relatively, our numbers are relatively low. None of the positive cases that can be contact-traced to community spread happened in our school buildings. They're all happening according to the Health District outside of our school buildings. So take a little quick, deeper dive into some of these numbers. Moving forward, this is going to be something that's going to be very helpful for us. Many of the Franklin County school districts were able to get involved in this project with Ohio State COVID-19 Analytics Targeted Surveillance Systems for Schools. So it's a daily monitoring tool and we just met with Ohio State. They were only letting Franklin County schools in the program, but through the ESC, we were able to have them, allow us to join this program. But it's going to help us identify suspected outbreaks, it's going to identify all kinds of different data by attendance zone and by case rate in those attendance zone, give us historical data, give us baseline data. We're going to go back a year with student and staff attendance rates and be able to compare to have this baseline data. We won't have this available for a couple of weeks, but this is going to be really important data for us to monitor as we go forward. And virtually every district in the area is going to use what they learned from this project to, to guide their back-to-school, return to full-time school efforts. Here you see our new cases by week per 1,000 students. And again, this is really complicated because there is such competing views of the data. What you look at, what you see when you look at the data, some people look at the data and think, oh my God, this is great. And some people look at it and say, oh my gosh, this is terrible. So you see there are two lines. One is us as Olentangie and we're unfortunately the higher line and then all the other central Ohio districts. So you can look at that and say, wow, Olentangie has more cases than any other Ohio school district. Or you can look at it and say, Olentangie has a low incident of positive cases week over week when considering the size of our school district and the number of students and staff. So, you know, again, it's just a matter of perception, but you know, that, that 1.13 number is, you multiply it by 22,000 students, another 2,600 staff or those kind of things. Now, we had hoped it would stay down or at least what we're looking for is that trend or a flatness to it because we know then our mitigation efforts are working. This is our cumulative cases per 1,000 students and we're the one all the way to the right. So again, on a positive note, you look at this, when normalized for our sides, our number of cases indicates low risk. But on the negative side, when you look at it, our number of cases is higher than most districts, which, you know, again, that suggests our risk is not as low as it possibly could be because we want to get it down to below one. So another thing we're looking at is our school clinic data by week. If you look at this, on average, 89 students go home ill each week with COVID- And if you look at this, on average, 89 students go home ill each week with COVID-like symptoms. Sounds like a big number, but again, for the size of our district, that's one student per school per day. So so far, we're not alarmed by this trend. But, you know, again, factors are changing, starting to enter flu season, and that factors into some of this stuff as we go move forward, and we're going to look at it from, with COVID-like or flu-like symptoms. So, you know, again, to go back to how do we maximize student learning while minimizing risk for students and staff, right now, our health data indicates very low risk, which is good. Again, depending on how long you think six weeks is. I think six weeks is a relatively short period of time so far to gather this data, and others think we should have made a decision six weeks ago. So something on here that is very, as Mrs. Patrick indicated, our sub-fill rate is really going to be a big factor, and you see there, our pool of available subs is down 30% from this time last year. Whereas, we had, we just have subs not willing to work, they don't want to come into the buildings for whatever reason, they're not picking up our jobs. Other districts are experiencing this as well. As more people come back on full-time or, you know, in hybrid, other districts are coming on in hybrid, Columbus is coming back on hybrid on October 19th, that's going to affect our availability to get subs. And we have to decide on a number that we're comfortable with or that we can operate a school building without having adequate number of substitute coverage. So this really is going to be a factor for us as to whether or not we can conduct school across, within a certain building. So I just want to summarize, you know, I mean, again, I've read, I read all the emails as well as all of you. I think we've worked hard to follow exactly what we laid out at the July 28th board meeting. Return to school in a hybrid model and provide a committed distance learning program. We've successfully, and I think we've successfully done both of those things. I realize I read a lot of those emails that people are struggling, and I'm, it makes me sad to hear of the stories of the kids who are struggling, and I encourage everyone, if you have a child who is struggling, communicate with your teachers, communicate with your school administrators, communicate with your building family as to how we can provide additional support. We know this isn't ideal. We know this isn't ideal. We know we facilitate maximum learning more effectively when we're in-person, full-time. But being able to return in this hybrid model has taught us a lot. We know kids are doing great wearing their masks, and we know that we can open our doors with smaller groups of students and significantly mitigate rates of illness, keeping them low. I think we know we can run an Olentangie-created, Olentangie-taught distance learning program. We know that hybrid learning is hard for kids when they're home. We know that hybrid teaching is hard for teachers when half their students are at home every day. We know that creating a from-scratch distance learning programs comes with unique challenges every day, but we're able to find success stories to celebrate regularly, and I think the thought exchange indicated that on both sides of the hybrid and the CDL. We know by and large, our students want to be back in school craving routines, learning activities, and social interaction, and we know that without a doubt, Olentangie staff goes above and by, above and beyond every single day to create an environment with opportunity students, for students to learn and grow. So we're six weeks in. We're going to continue to monitor the criteria and data points shared this evening. At our next board meeting, two weeks from now, we will have eight weeks' worth of data, and I think that'll be adequate time to truly evaluate all of our risks and our overall environment. And at that October board meeting, I'll give you another review of our trends and our risks and share those next steps. So I will, at that board meeting, indicate a return to full school, all-in, five days at that board meeting, and the timeline to do that because it cannot happen immediately. It'll take us a little bit of time to be properly prepared with additional social distance, PPE and social distancing and those. We're actively preparing for that. Our initial estimation was it was going to be four weeks. I told the operations team that was too long, so that we've got to cut down, and I think we can, we have it in a much tighter timeframe as to if, if we decide, if our trends hold and we decide that these indicators, we're comfortable with these indicators, and our trends hold, that we will be able to return to school full-time in, very, very soon. Again, I don't want to commit to a specific date because I don't want to commit to something I can't deliver on. I think I'll know that for sure in the next two weeks. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Yeah, I have a list. Okay, somebody take it away. First of all, if we go back five days a week, or when we go back five days a week, let's say that, for those students who are currently in the hybrid but then don't feel comfortable going back five days a week, can they go to the CDL program to finish out this semester? Knowing that we have a waiting list of people who wanted to get in that program?
We did honor all the people in the waiting list. The CDL classrooms are larger than our in-person classrooms, and I would say, standing here today, that the CDL program is full, that there is not, that that option is not available. You know, the question would naturally become, well, if people want to leave CDL, there's a, there are a lot of logistics of people, you know, people that committed to CDL committed for the semester. We're going to start a process of trying to get an understanding of a commitment of, do they want to continue in CDL, or do they want to come back into our schools after, when second semester starts? And that is going to be a big undertaking for HR and the academic team in terms of placing kids. Quite honestly, there may be people that end up having to change teachers because of this, and that's, you know, again, that, there's a lot of bumps in the road still coming. So our little email blitz today is just one side of the email conversation that we can have because, you know, we are strongly considering going back full-time, and that will not make everybody happy, as you saw indicated on the thought exchange. Mr. Wright, always, when we were principals, when it got down, when you really got into a muddy, difficult issue, the end of the day, the final question we always ask each other, he always reminds me of, what's best for the kids? Not the adults, but what's best for the kids? And being in school five days a week is what's best for kids eventually. But again, we have to make sure we're comfortable with the risks because those, as Mrs. Patrick indicated, they're, you know, what Big Walnut is doing, being all-in, is they have, they're saying three feet of social distancing, two masks is their mitigation, and that community's comfortable with that. And we have to be comfortable with that. And we didn't know in July how the kids would do with the masks, but I do think the kids are really doing well with the masks, and that, that two pieces of mitigation is good and will social distance as much as we possibly can.
Okay. Knowing that Big Walnut in New Albany, who just went back five full days, I'm not sure of any other school district in central Ohio that is back five full days or are planning on it.
Buckeye Valley's planning at the end of the quarter.
Who is?
Buckeye Valley at the end of the quarter.
At the end of the quarter. Because, I mean, Gehanna's just starting hybrid maybe next week if they don't strike. Columbus is starting hybrid on the 19th. I know Pickerington has a school board meeting on Monday where they're going to be trying to set a comeback date, but, you know, people keep saying, "Everybody's going back full-time," but, so, we know two, right? Two that are currently full-time. Buckeye Valley's going to be full-time, and that's all we know. Is that correct right now?
Yeah.
Well, I'm talking central Ohio, you know, the OCC. Let's just compare the OCC.
I've talked to the superintendent of Dublin and Hilliard, and their indicator plans show yellow going back full-time when their case counts are below 25 or 20 per 100,000. We're sitting at 100, in our school district, according to the Ohio State data, we have 129 cases per 100,000.
So they're much more conservative than we are.
Well, they're talking about going back, if they go back to at 100 and, or 25, 20 and 25, I think, with the numbers. I spoke to the Mason superintendent today because they've been back in, they have four buildings for 10,500 kids, they have 3,000 kids in their high school. Their, their health commissioner is saying anybody within six feet, mask or not, is a contact. So they've had 600 high school students in quarantine.
Oh, hi.
So again, that's, that's something we're actively engaged in our discussion because a kid who's a contact now goes out 14 days, or even worse, if their sibling is positive, they're going to sit out 14 days that their, or 10 days that their sibling's positive, and then an additional 14 days because they're a, so that students have to school 24 days. So when we, when we looked at this hybrid model, it was, our initial thought was, instead of just rushing in and opening full-time, how can we maintain some stability? And we thought this gave us that model, and we still think it does give us some of that model, but, you know, there is a point where you have to look at the numbers and say, they're acceptably low enough to make, to consider making a change.
Okay. When we go back five days a week, can we have the kids closer together because there's more in a room? Most likely, we'll have more kids who have to quarantine, so how do we teach those kids that are in quarantine because they can't go into the CDL program because that's full? Their teachers are now teaching five days for full classes, so is it asynchronous learning? You just give them a pack? I mean, what happens?
Where's Jen?
That's a tough question.
Yeah. I mean, you know, again, it's student absence, there's a different, you know...
It's not like they're out three days for the flu.
Right. Now, we are fortunate, our health district will not call our cases contacts if they're, if both kids are masked.
How many feet, though? Does it, doesn't matter?
Doesn't matter.
Okay.
If they're both masked, they're not contacts. So right now, that's how they're operating. But again, there's, those are the CDC guidelines, the CDC guidelines that the Warren County Health Commissioner is using are different than what the American Academy of Pediatricians' guidelines that our health commissioner is okay with. But that, that contact issue is big. It really, you know, it's, it's a...
I mean, we already have a JV soccer team that's been quarantined, you know, so...
Well, and now that the CDC has talked about this, the airborne nature of the virus and, you know, and again, who isn't happy that people with, that are getting the virus are mostly asymptomatic and not being violently ill? Who isn't happy that the disease is not, for most, for kids, isn't life-threatening? Those are, it's all great news, but it could potentially be life-threatening for adults in our buildings and other adults who kids go home to. So, I mean, there's just so many other factors that go into it that, and again, it goes back to this debate of, you know, again, if you obviously read your emails, you know, that will continue. And as I said to some of you, I'm having this debate in my, in my brain every, every single second of every single day. I'm arguing with myself about it based off of what I last read, or, so...
And then finally, how are we doing curriculum-wise? Are our hybrid kids falling behind the CDL kids because the CDL kids, you know, are getting contact with a teacher, although it's online, it's every day? Are teachers feeling like they're covering the same amount of material that they covered last year?
You know, I, first of all, I don't, I don't like, I don't ever use the word "cover material" because that doesn't indicate that we're actually learning. You can cover a lot, and the only thing that really matters is whether or not the kids are learning. You know, I've heard good comments about more personalization. Kids are feeling that, like, they know their teachers better because they get a little bit, they get a lot more attention because there's only half as many kids there. There's nowhere to hide when you're sitting in a class of 10 or 12 as opposed to a class of 26 or 28. So I think, like, the AP teachers may feel a little bit of stress because they've got a lot of content to get in. The standards at the elementary are so broad that, and they're so cyclical, I wouldn't argue that that would be the case. Dr. Fettie, is he shaking his head back there? What's he, is he, is he giving me any affirmation?
No, I'm back there.
He love watching me struggle. But, you know, as for, as far as, I don't have an indication that they're falling behind the CDL plans, so...
I have one question, and I don't know if this is, you probably don't have the answer, but it seems like something that should be talked about amongst superintendents. If we follow the college model, they're testing all kids. Is there any talks of when we could go to testing all students? Because these numbers, I mean, so many of the kids are, they don't have symptoms, so they could be spreading to adults in the room or whatever. We really don't know. Is there any talks of, like, when we could get testing for all school students in Ohio?
You know, I thought, I, I thought I heard that, you know, we're actively engaged with the governor's office and talking about getting some clarity on what exactly is a contact. There are, there are talks about trying to get some testing in for school-age kids. It just comes down to who's going to pay for all that. And Ohio State's testing 7, 8,000 kids a day or a week.
But testing isn't a preventative, like, a pregnancy test doesn't prevent you from getting pregnant, you know? So it's not a preventative measure, so...
But we really don't know our infection rate, you know?
But the test, and, but, you know, but the test result is only good...
That day, right then.
Because the next, as soon as you go out and about and do something.
Yeah.
So, you know, any other questions?
Just a comment. I've always been very appreciative of how the understanding of your entire staff has looked at these issues over a long period of time. It's a very complex, comprehensive issue, and I know that with strict confidence that you all look at all of those options, the data points, the teachers, the students, the parents, and how all that comes into play, and I'm very pleased with how you all concentrate on that effort.
Thank you. I, I'm saying, I'm sharing this with staff, I'm just, I'm sharing it with, you know, with everybody. I, I've been really good all throughout this. Spring was tough, obviously, losing, going through the graduation and the time, just was, it was, but we banded together and made it through it. Everybody was in it. Every school district was in it together, you know, everybody was experiencing the same kind of things. This, and we came back, and I was really, the team did a great job putting a plan together and implementing that plan. Everybody banded together, opened the building, got our kids back, and celebrated opening the building. The last three weeks have been really, really tough, and it's because I've, I usually, when I'm presented with a problem, I know the answer. Whether it's instinctual or through experience or through collaboration with our team, we get to the answer. We get to a really good answer. We get to a really good answer that most people are going to accept and be, be good with because we've usually used a good process. And as I said, I've been arguing with myself for three weeks because I, just like, you can argue both sides of this, and it is really, it is a struggle. It's exhausting to not, because I'm supposed to have the answers. I'm supposed to have all the answers. And I told the administrative team, our principals, I said, you know, "I've known a lot of you guys a long time, and I know some of you think I'm, I think I know everything, and that I'm always that confident and that self-assured, and you're witnessing a real moment of weakness." So if you, if you really, if you were waiting for that time when I didn't have all the answers, relish it because we're going to get the answer to this right, and we're going to get through it and be back at it. So I just, you know, I know there's a lot of people out there that truly support all that we're doing and trust us with their most precious, their most precious resource, their most precious asset, their children. They know we're really trying every day to give it our real, our best, so. And as I said, I've said this repeatedly, we could not do that without your support. So we thank you again for all that, so...
Well, thank you, Mr. Rafe. I think you're holding yourself to a higher...
Thank you.
You do?
Yeah, sorry, action items. Yeah, we're still running a school district, by the way. So you see up there, there's a whole bunch of easements. There's a big 500 or so unit housing development going in across from... unit housing development going in across from Berlin High School with Long Hill Limited Partners. So you see a bunch of easements there for sanitary sewer and water lines and, and so on. We have to go into different agreements with a whole bunch of different entities to get all that stuff done. You see on here the approval, this is really my, the saddest action item of the year, the approval of road salt, because it means winter's coming. I hate even seeing it on there. Mr. Meyer definitely does, because he's first out with the weather team. And then you see on here a bid from Truco. Truco's have done a lot of work for us over the years. They're a great Olentangie family and company, so they're going to be constructing the off-site sanitary sewer line for Elementary 16, so. And then there's our next important dates. Next Friday is code day. It's not a day of school, and we are fast approaching the end of first quarter.
And I think you're being hard on yourself, Mr. Rafe, because the medical professionals don't know what to do, so.
Thanks.
It's pretty divided out there. Okay, Mrs. Hatfield, would you please present your treasurer's report?
Good evening. See if I can, I'm going to take this off. I do apologize if we are looking at the agenda and discussion items versus the treasurer's update. I put all of the bond information in my treasurer's update versus holding it for discussion items, so we're kind of get ahead of ourselves a little bit. But I think we're okay with that overall. In terms of, you know, what's going on with the treasurer's office, obviously, we've talked about the financial forecast update. We are working to wrap that up. We have a draft presentation ready for our finance and audit committee to meet and discuss on Monday. So that's always a great review. Again, we meet with a group who are professional financial individuals, whether that's in CPAs, accounting, some are in schools, some are in other entities, corporate entities, and they help us take a look at our assumptions and our risks and make sure that we're on target with where we are as a district in that forecast. So we'll do that and then bring the first reading or draft of the forecast to the board on October 22nd. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and get ahead of ourselves just a moment, but we have a bond refunding that we have before you for approval this evening. What we are looking at is to reapprove the various purpose Series 2013 bonds as a taxable refunding. There are some statistics on the slide for you. The par amounts just under $31 million. The net present value cash flow savings would be just over $4 million, and on average, about $267,000 annual cash flow savings. So great, what does that mean? What we're looking to do, and we've done this before as a school district, we refinance or refund our debt by bond series. So when we issue a certain amount of bonds, it's like having a home mortgage, you're issuing a certain amount of debt to pay down over time. We do collect tax dollars for our bond debt, so we are always looking at what can we do to help mitigate the interest costs? How can we keep these costs low? By doing these proactive measures, we are able to come back to our community. For example, when we came back for the newest bond levy for Elementary 16, 17, and Middle School 6, we were able to do it as a no new millage because we make sure that we are refunding items as we can to get our best interest rates possible. This particular issuance would be redone as a tax refunding, taxable refunding. The difference between a taxable and a tax exempt is really just a change that we have to work with inside of the new laws and regulations. Tax-exempt bonds cannot be refunded and advanced anymore. You have to take them to the market as a taxable refund. And if in the future, the tax-exempt law would change, we would be able to go back to the market and refund it again as a tax-exempt, but that's to be determined at a much future date, depending on legislative changes. When we refund bonds, we are not looking at stretching out the base 30 years from which the debt was issued. It's not exactly the same as a home mortgage in that regard. You are still staying at the same 30-year window. You're just changing the interest rate or reducing the interest rate, the cost of the debt. So it's not that we are extending this out and creating more debt in perpetuity. We're really just exchanging the interest rates and reselling them in the bond market to get that lower rate. So it's a great thing for the community to take part of and be able to, for us to redo this on our taxpayers' behalf. This is a very fast turnaround. Our schedule for this would be pricing at the end of October and close mid-November. Typically, we don't move that fast, but we want to be able to take advantage of the market rates that are out there right now. They're very low, and we also want to make sure that we price before the election. We're not sure what continued volatility or additional volatility we'll see in economics and the economy in general in the nation, once that occurs. So we're trying to get, hedge our bets and get it priced before that disruption occurs so we can move forward. I know, there's a whole nother conversation in Facebook, and I just stirred up, I'm sure. But the end of the day, it's a good, good move for the district. With that, I will take any questions you might have about the finance and audit committee meeting or the bond refunding.
And, and Dave and Kevin are on our finance and audit. Right?
Yes, and Emily and I got on a call with a financial advisor, went through the bond refunding, and I think it makes sense. For the 2013, there are others it doesn't make sense for, but for the 2013s, based on when they're issued and where rates are now, it makes sense.
Right. We looked through the issuances of 2012 all the way through 2015, and this was the series that made the most sense for the market rate. You know, the net present value savings gets into negative arbitrage, which is a whole lot of financial data that can be very complicated, but at the end of the day, the net present value savings is more than we'd ever would have gotten otherwise, so it's worth taking the move, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Both for looking into that opportunity for us. Do we have any public participation this evening?
Yes, we do. I believe Mrs. Davis has the email responses.
Well, welcome back to the podium for your third time.
Thank you. Busy day. Busy day. Alrighty. The first, I have three. The first one is from Stacy Fisk, 846 Clearbrook Lane, Delaware, Ohio 43015. "I reside at 846 Clearbrook Lane along with my husband and two daughters who are currently students in the Olentangie Local School District. I am also the proud Navy wife of a retired US Navy SEAL who retired as a Master Chief in 2017 after serving almost 24 years and deploying over 18 times all over the world. Upon retirement, we made the decision to move to Ohio and in particular, to live in the Olentangie School District due to personal and family ties to the area, but also due to the outstanding record and reputation of the district. We believed this was the best place to be to provide our girls with the high-quality education we desired for them. Currently, our sophomore is participating in the in-person hybrid model at Olentangie because she longed to be back with her friends and teachers, and I knew I could not help her with the many high-level classes she is enrolled in. We chose to keep our third grader home due to the many changes and restrictions in the classroom, as well as the uncertainty of how often the kids may have to change between models due to the parameters established in the Olentangie Back-to-School Plan. We felt it would give her the greatest consistency, and I am fortunate that I can stay home and help her throughout her school day. As a parent of students in both educational models that Olentangie is providing, I'm here as a witness to say this hybrid model is not working. Our sophomore isn't getting nearly the level or amount of instruction she needs and deserves. She's been a straight A student throughout her Olentangie career, and although she's maintaining her high grades, she's lost interest and, more importantly, much of the joy that would come from the full participation in school all of our students deserve. She comes home tired and emotionally drained from the constant cleaning, mask-wearing, and additional burdens of social distancing that have robbed our students of their love for school. Instead of teaching all of the important subjects, the teachers are now forced to teach our kids to stay away from each other, to be afraid, to pull up their masks, and to worry constantly about germs on surfaces, which detracts both attention and time from the precious little time they even have in school. The inconsistency of being in person one day and then sometimes up to three, four, or five days off is not at all conducive to learning or maintaining proper instruction for high school students preparing and building resumes for their future college careers. The sacrifices we made as a family to support my husband's military career instilled in us great pride to be American citizens, as well as the determination and strength to persevere, persevere through countless physical and emotional stresses most families will never experience. My husband served our country with great honor and is very modest about his many career awards and accomplishments. His courage to fight to protect the country I know and love is what inspired me to write this letter. I believe now is the time for us all to have courage. We need to show the courage and fortitude that instead of living in fear and denying our children, who are the future of this great country, a proper and full education, we do have the ability and choice to provide our kids with five days of full, in-person, high-quality education we have grown to know and love in our last three years living in this community. The district has generously come up with a more than adequate solution for any family or teacher who chooses to participate in the educational process from home, whether out of fear of, of a virus, to protect other family members, or simply because they feel that it is the best way for their students to learn. It is now time to offer the same benefit to everyone else who believes that in-person learning is the best option for their children and students. Enough time has passed that we now know the risks of dying or becoming severely ill from COVID-19 to children under the age of 19 are in fact much lower than the risks of the common flu. We do not all stay home, close schools, and force universal mask-wearing for the flu each year, so why in the world would we do that for a much less dangerous virus? We all walk out, we all walk out of the door every day knowing we are at risk of contracting a vast number of viruses, getting into a car accident, being a victim of a violent crime, or natural disaster, but never in my lifetime have we taught our children the best way to handle such risks is to stay home and hide. We now know who the most vulnerable are to this virus and how to best protect them, but we also know they are not the age group that makes up our student body. It makes no sense to punish our students and deny them their full education to protect the minority. We must immediately go back to providing the full education our students deserve and yearn for. The mental, educational, and emotional toll the shutdowns and now ongoing hybrid form of education you are providing far outpace and outrank the risk that COVID-19 poses to our students. Governor DeWine had said, has said that he is leaving the educational plans up to the local school districts. This is in your hands, and you have the ability to get us back to in-person learning with as few restrictions as possible. Please do what is right for our kids and get them back into classrooms full-time to prevent any further damage to so many."
That's for that public record.
Okay, and then I will stop. Next up is Dorothy Ashford, 2589, Sandhurst Drive, Lewis Center, Ohio 43035. "Feel strongly kids at school five days per week with distancing supported through use of gyms and pop-up trailer module rentals. Hybrid in place for kids in classrooms. All-day kids at school in alternative spaces. Kids are all at school five days per week. We pay the taxes and pass the levy. We have the money. This is possible now. Volunteers can support Chaperone Alternative Spaces. Thank you for your support of our kids." And the last public participation is Stephanie Fichtelman, 518 Crickstone Drive, Delaware, Ohio. "To whom it may concern, other than the fact that I want to divorce my husband every day we have to do at-home learning, my third grader keeps mentioning that her teacher won't slow down. Now, I'm very certain that with the third grade guarantee, these teachers have no choice but to plow through lessons as quickly as possible, but this continues to prove that the hybrid model is the worst model our education system could have possibly created in order for our students to succeed. The proof is out there and even more so proven within our own district. Kids that become infected with coronavirus are not super-spreaders and no major outbreak has happened. Open the schools five days and stop saying it's for my safety. I will determine what level of risk my family's willing to take, and their total lack of learning in this environment is clearly the worst level of risk to their future. You have no more excuses or scientific proof to back up why you won't allow us to go back full-time."
Okay, is that it?
That is it.
Thank you for sharing. We're going to move on to our discussion items. The first one, please welcome Sharon Jurowitz from our Facilities Committee. She has the fun job of enrollment projection, but that's an important job because it drives all our decisions going forward, so welcome Sharon. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Sharon.
Our enrollment report projections this year are based on the September 4th enrollment numbers. It's different this year because we are using the numbers from the first full week of school, the Monday of the first full week. Normally, we base our report on the numbers from the third week of school, once things have kind of settled down a little bit and we have slightly more accurate numbers. But honestly, the report that I just got yesterday is pretty similar to this, so we're confident that we're using good numbers. Our projected versus actual enrollment numbers, you can see that this year we are off overall from pre-K to seniors is off by 2.4%, just a little bit higher than we're normally off by. You can see that the largest differences are in pre-K, K, and 1. We do believe that those differences are because of the things that are happening with COVID, the hybrid model, people maybe not enrolling their kids in preschool or kindergarten, or finding alternative methods of educating their kids this year in particular. If you look at our numbers just grades 2 through 12, we are only off by about 0.9%, which is more in keeping with our typical accuracy.
Your pandemic an event. A 100-year pandemic and Olentangie enrollment's down. Only two things that happen once every 100 years.
That's true. This is our projected enrollment for the next 10 years. I apologize that it's small. I think you guys have it on your screen, so hopefully you can see it. Our numbers are looking pretty consistent to what we've been showing the past couple years. I won't spend any time going through these particular numbers. Our next pages will talk about how we arrived at these numbers. This is PK through 12 enrollment. The yellow are the past 10 years. The green is this current year. In the blue are the next 10 years, what we have forecasted. You can see that we had a slight drop in overall enrollment from last year to this year. Not significant, and we do continue to grow. This graph indicates our different enrollment projections that we have shown over the past several years, just indicating how we're trying to work towards having better accuracy, not for just the next year or two, but for the next 10 years looking out. And you can see that our lines have been fluctuating up and down over the past couple years. The blue, which is the highest one, was what we projected last year. Purple is what we're looking at this year. All the numbers did drop down just a slight bit based on the numbers that we are seeing at the beginning of this year. This is our historic numbers for the district, which I always love this rollercoaster slide. You do see that the red lines are the only drop in numbers, and this, as Mark Rafe just said, this is the first time we've had a dip in enrollment since 1984. But it's not significant. Don't be alarmed. This shows what Delaware County Regional Planning Commission has projected for the population of the Olentangie District, not just students, but overall population, all people. And it's the, their past three reports, so their 17 report, 18, and their 19 report. Each of these past three years, they are projecting more and more people- Each of these past three years, they are projecting more and more people. And if you see the bars on the side, you can see that for the next decade, they're looking at a 22% growth over the next decade in population. The decade after that, 30 to 40, a 13% drop. So that's, goes right in line with what we're looking at for our enrollment projections. We are definitely looking at that increase, and that over time, we're still increasing, but the increase is less drastic. So we feel that we are right in line with what Delaware County is projecting. Our preschool enrollment, we typically look at it as a percentage of the kindergarten population. This year it was low, but we do feel that it is an anomaly with both kindergarten and pre-K being low. We are looking in the future at having it be consistent at a 33% of kindergarten. We think that's still a good number to look at, even though this, this year was lower. I'm sorry, 31% of kindergarten. And actually, I don't know exactly what the numbers are, but that went up at least 10, 12 students, I think, in the past, since this report was written, and I think it's higher now. Our kindergarten enrollment this year is down, as you can see with that green line. We still feel that the overall growth of kindergarten is going along that red curve. We are looking at basing that number on the housing starts. This is the model that we've used for the past several years. We were predicting that there would be 700 new single-family housing starts each year for several years, then dropping down to 500, then 300. We still believe that to be true. And then the multifamily also tapering down over the years. If you look at the bar on the upper corner, we are comparing the number of single-family permits at this time through August for the past three years. We're actually quite surprised to see that this year's numbers were not any lower than we've seen in previous years. So we do feel that this year's number of kindergarten being low is truly an anomaly. This is kindergarten throughout history. Again, the red arrows indicate the few drops in enrollment that we've had throughout time. We don't predict any drops in the future. The rest of the grades are all predicted based on grade advancement growth. So we look at kindergartners becoming first graders, first graders becoming second graders. The past couple years, we've looked at using a two-year average to look at what that great growth ratio would be. The numbers for that are in the blue bar. We felt that this year, those were a little bit lower than what we have typically been seeing. Again, we think that's because this year's numbers are a little bit off. So what we used for our projections were last year's two-year average, so we use those same percentages that we used last year. Again, we'll reevaluate all these things next year when we get new numbers and see how things pan out. These are the elementary numbers, pre-K through 5. Again, the green bar is this year's, and then the blue is going forward. How we look at elementary school, same as the last couple years, is looking at it per classroom and not just number of students. Next year, we will be opening another elementary school, so we will have an increase in classroom. So when you look at our projected classroom need, we do end up with elementary school opening. Next year, we'll have 504 classrooms. Out in the 26, 27 school year, we will have a deficit of classrooms, and we'll need Elementary 17 to be opened by that date. Even the year before, it just five extra classrooms. That's getting tight at that point because it's not going to be, students aren't evenly distributed across all the schools. We're showing Elementary 17 opening in the 23, 24 year, because that's what we had shown last year, and that's what was talked about on the bond information. The middle school numbers, again, middle school dropped a slight bit this year from last year, but we are showing market growth in their projection. Again, their capacity is based on number of classrooms. We're looking at middle school six coming into the works in the next couple years, which will be adding 52 classrooms to our numbers. So we look at classroom need with just what we have now. We have 221 available classrooms. We will have a deficit in the 22, 23 school year. We're looking at opening middle school six that following year, and then not having any deficits in the 10-year forecast once middle school six is open. But you can see at the 10th year, we are at just a positive one classroom at that point. The high school enrollment actually went up this year and will continue to go up. We don't look at high school as a classroom model. We do look at overall students. In the 24, 25 year, we do exceed the 1,800 design capacity of the high schools, but we know that we can exceed that, so not till the 29, 30 year do we exceed the 2,000, which is what we felt was comfortable capacity for the high schools. So we don't feel that there's any high school classroom need at this point.
Say it again.
I can say it several times loud.
Very loud.
There is no need for additional classroom space at this point.
I have a question on the, on the second elementary school that we have. Do you think there would be a way to push that out further, looking at these numbers?
We talked about that a little bit last night. It's definitely something that we need to look into, that we'll be looking at definitely in next year's numbers, seeing how the pre-K, K, first grade numbers, if they bounce back up, if they bounce back even higher, what those numbers are. We definitely, I think, from an enrollment perspective, have that flexibility to push it out. We definitely need to look at the dollar amount. It does save money on the administrative costs, but it does add money because you're waiting a year or possibly two to build, so construction costs go up. So it is something that we're going to have to look at and weigh those pros and cons. And if we need to stay six feet apart, we're, we're going to need it.
Yeah, and just to remind people, we haven't sold the bonds for that building yet, so...
And we did, thankfully, build enough that we don't get into a situation that we got into in 2011 for inflationary costs, so...
Right. We can't move it out too many years, but we can move it out two years.
That was meant for me.
That, that was a topic of conversation last night, and, yeah, Emily would, you know, shared some financial information on that, and, but we do have a little bit of flexibility, and we did promise voters that we were not going to sell bonds before we needed to and open a, a school that isn't going to be filled.
Right.
So we, we made that commitment, and so I think that's an area of constant monitoring that... Well, we've done that before.
Yeah.
You know, where we held off.
It's also something about with the redistricting, also, if you're going to redistrict for the middle school, do you want to do it at the same time that you're doing the elementary school, or, I mean, there, there's a lot of moving parts, I think, to that that are probably beyond the scope of the Facilities Committee.
Yeah.
But we can weigh in in the parts that we know, the numbers and the costs.
Well, Sharon, I always appreciate you putting all this work into this report because I rely on it a lot. So for you volunteering your time and the committee members volunteering their time to do this, it's greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Yes.
So it is our driving factor, so now it, you know, now it's in the, it'll go into the forecast.
Feeds to finance.
And, and it's a tremendous amount of time, I'm sure, that you put in because it's a very robust report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any other comments?
No, it's just good stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. I do think, though, as Emily prepares the, five-year forecast for the next meeting, the first reading next meeting?
Yes, the 22nd.
We'll need to make that decision on, or think about that because there is an impact forecast in. Right now, it's in the forecast.
Correct. We do have the two elementaries and middle school in the forecast as previously scheduled, so we can discuss that at the first reading and make an adjustment before we bring it back for final approval, if you'd like. And we can certainly discuss it with our committee, the Finance and Audit Committee, to see their suggestions and get their feedback as well.
Okay, were you going to come back up to the podium for your resolution, or?
I don't believe you really want me to drag that out any longer than we need to. I think we're in good shape. I apologize, I got ahead of myself on the agenda.
That's okay. Did, did anybody come up with additional questions that we need to discuss in regards to our resolution for bonds?
Thank you, Sharon.
Very good. So with that being said, I will entertain a motion to approve our enrollment projections for...
I'll move.
Thank you, Mr. King.
Second.
Feasel, any discussion?
I know.
Oh, are we, are we...
No, you're good.
Okay. All right, please call the roll.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Haffey, would you now please present your Treasurer Action Item?
Yes, please. I would like to present Treasurer Action Item A for approval, please.
I'll move. I never get to do that. Second. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
That's why I don't do that.
Mrs. Wagner Feasel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rafe, would you please present your Superintendent Action Items?
So first, I'd like to present Superintendent Action Item A6, the Approval of People Activity Supervisor Supplemental Contract Employment. So there's a long list of supplemental contracts. One name on the list is John C. Feasel, so I know Mrs. Feasel likes to abstain from that item, so I will present Superintendent Action Item. It doesn't mean she's voting no on everybody else.
Right.
She is just not voting for her husband's contract.
Although he needs to do this because he'll drive me crazy. There's no golf in the winter.
Now, if, if Mr. O'Brien chooses to vote no, he is voting no on your husband's contract.
Right.
So, so I'll present Superintendent Action Item A6 for approval.
I'll move.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner Feasel?
Abstain.
Thank you. And Mrs. Patrick?
What do you want, Julie? Yes, yes.
So then I will present Superintendent Action Items A1 through 5 and B through H for approval.
Okay, have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Wagner Feasel?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
We will, I will now take a motion to enter into executive session as permitted by Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code to consider the employment of public employees in Section 121.22, preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiation or bargaining sessions with employees, and as permitted by Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code to consider the purchase of property for public purposes. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Thank you, Mr. King. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Weiss. Please call the roll.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner Feasel?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
We'll now go into executive session. We'll return only to adjourn, and our next board meeting will be on October 22nd, same place. Okay, it's 8:57. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Wagner Feasel?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
We are adjourned.
Thank you. That was...